This special board meeting of the Board of Education for November 19th, 2020 is called to order. Welcome, sorry, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Kirkpatrick, I had that backwards, my apologies. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider your complaint number 2020-04, which was put into advance after the Board met in a special meeting on January 21st, 2020, and you accepted the offer of mediation. We understand that the mediation did not resolve the issues you raised, and so your Step 3 appeal is now back before the Board for a decision. The content raised in your complaint and Step 3 appeal to the Board will be heard in two parts. First, we will hear your concerns about the following issues. Number one, the concerns you raised about the medical accuracy and parental ability to opt out of the sexual health education curriculum. We will also discuss the concerns you raised about how the curriculum encourages sex stereotypes and teaches people who don't confirm to sexual stereotypes are pathological and need medical intervention. Two, we will also discuss your concerns about how the current curriculum is invasive in that it questions students and by extension their family positions on political and religious beliefs. And finally, we will discuss your complaint, the district did not follow federal FERPA requirement that we keep student information confidential. After that, the remaining concerns you have raised will be heard in an executive session under ORS 192.6604, because the remaining parts of the complaint pertains to confidential educational records. In executive sessions pertaining to confidential educational records, members of the public and media are not able to attend the meeting. The Board will take a vote for each part of the meeting. You will have five minutes to provide your comment tonight in each part of the meeting, both this public meeting and the executive session. Following your comments, we will take the next five minutes for Board members to follow up with questions for you or for our staff. I will be enforcing the time limits this evening. We will acknowledge that you do have a different Step 1 complaint also pending against PPS, but this hearing tonight, consistent with ODE requirements, is exclusively about the Step 3 appeal of the complaint you originally filed in August of 2019. We will therefore take comments on that matter only, and we will deliberate and vote on that matter only. Again, welcome tonight, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Kirkpatrick. Would you like to begin? And I will ask you first to discuss the matters from your appeal that are unrelated to your students' confidential records, as was outlined in the notice you received from our complaint coordinator. Now is the time to hear your concerns about the sexual health curriculum, your ability to access and opt out of that curriculum, and your concerns about the district providing FERPA-protected information to others within the district. As we have outlined earlier in an email from Lydia Lopez-Gamboa, our complaints coordinator, in this public meeting, the concerns that you have raised specific to your child will be heard in the executive session to protect your child's confidentiality. I want to apologize in advance if it appears that I am preventing you from presenting information important to this decision, but I may need to interrupt you if you begin speaking about complaints that infringe upon your students' confidentiality, which we will hear during the executive session or our amended complaints at the Step 1 level of review. I know this is complex and messy and clunky, and so I ask both of you for your patience tonight as I try to make sure we're respecting you and respecting your daughter and also giving you a fair chance to be heard. So I hope that's clear. All right. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Kirkpatrick, I invite you now to share any comments you would like to have for the Board for this public part of our session.
Thank you. It's been difficult to prepare for this. As you said, it is awkward and clunky, and it's going on 10 years now of awkward and clunkiness. We feel we're here largely for, as a formal gesture, to be done with this, to document the failure of the process so that we can move to the next level. Earlier this year, we sat before you, we discussed a lot of things, some of which we can't discuss here, some of which we can, but we provided you 10 years of good faith documentation, including, you know, detailed files of communications documenting problems that the school district has, systemic and longstanding problems, both with failure to provide for the needs of its disabled students and with political harassment on campus. And we provided you with really good evidence to those dovetail and that, you know, families of disabled children who present concerns to you about political harassment on campus then are retaliated against through refusal to provide services to their children. And we won't go into specific details of that, but I think the public needs to hear that in the public record, that this was 10 years of us in good faith negotiations with high-ranking administrators, always being told that a solution was around the corner, that it would be taken care of, and never, never getting that. And the concerns that we've brought to you are not just something that we've gone after because we're interested in money. We've never asked for money. We've always tried to help you be a better school district because we believe in public school and we believe in your mission, as you've stated it. We are concerned at the unequal treatment of the disabled, of gay and lesbian and butch and femme students. We are concerned that, you know, your complete obsession with national politics has led to the exodus of large numbers of kindergarten and third-grade students through formal withdrawals and untold number of students through an informal withdrawal. Our daughter's class, and this is not just divulging personal information about her, but just from what we can see, you know, and many of her classes, we've been told our kid is the only one handing in assignments. So, you know, we've been trying to help you. We've been offered to help you many times over the years. We were told that, yes, the district wanted to talk to families about how better to deal with hot-button political issues, how better to stay out of them, how better to stick to curriculum, how better to deal with, you know, requirements about health in a way that doesn't pathologize people who are different. And at every step of the way, we've offered ourselves in good faith and not only been rebuffed, but I mean, not heard back in two years, you know. And that has really worked to the district's advantage because then that's two more years of information that gets ticked off the statute of limitations of what we're allowed to talk about. So through extending good faith to you, we've suffered. And, you know, we've been in touch with other families. We've been approached by staff, other people are suffering, many of whom have been afraid to approach you because of the intimidation. And we will go into detail in private session over the specifics of the intimidation that our child experienced, but it's a widespread problem that everyone can feel. And we're done. You know, we feel like we've worked with you. And, you know, in some cases, it's resulted in letters from high-ranking administrators saying, "We don't intend to comply with federal curriculum law." You know, just to heck with you. That is how our good faith has been repaid. And we are disillusioned, we're horrified, and we're just ready to move on to the next level, quite frankly.
May I interject specifically regarding the mediation process?
Well, and we can't talk about, this is public.
Well, let me just say, let me just say that many of the issues that were outlined at the beginning of this hearing, we were not allowed to discuss during our mediation process.
At the last minute, we're told, "Oh, by the way, you won't be talking about any of that stuff."
The mediation process was severely curtailed and limited, seemingly at the last minute. And while Principal Frazier and the lady who-
Jenny Whitteman.
Whitteman were both very accommodating and helpful to us in that process. We were dismayed because the mediation was, did not address many of the issues that we thought we were going to be able to address.
And then we were asked, as a result, to sign a waiver releasing the school from liability for all of the issues that they didn't address. And so we really feel like we're done, like our good faith efforts for you are done and we're ready to move on to ODE, we're ready to move on to federal, we're just done. You know, we tried, we still want to see you succeed, and it breaks our heart to see what's going on in these schools because-
I very much appreciate it. I remember-
Children are not getting served.
I remember when you came before us in January and we were able to highlight the option of mediation, and I was very thankful you were able to explore that. And I'm very sorry that it didn't work out to resolve the concerns that you had. We're going to take some time now for school Board members to ask questions of you and of staff. So Board colleagues, how would you, what questions do you have in this moment? Julia, I noticed that you're unmuted. Do you have a question? Okay. It's one of the challenges of Zoom facilitation is trying to read what would normally be like body language cues through Zoom, so I apologize. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Johnson or Ms. Kirkpatrick or for our staff in this moment?
Carolyn, can you remind us again the subject matter? I'm sorry to, I'm drawing kind of a box here. The specific where we are right now.
Yes, so we can ask questions right now about the medical accuracy and the parental ability to opt out of the sexual health education curriculum, the concerns raised about how the curriculum encourages sex stereotypes and teaches people who don't confirm to sexual stereotypes are pathological and need medical intervention, concerns about the current curriculum being invasive in that it questions students and by extension their family positions on political and religious beliefs, and finally, that the district did not follow FERPA by keeping student information confidential. So those are sort of the four things we can talk about right now.
I just want to reiterate one of the things that was brought up was whether a link was provided and a password to view the curriculum. Am I in the right topic area now?
That, if I may, Director Bailey, that the link and the question about access to the virtual scholars curriculum is part of the Step 1 response. In this part of the, in this Step 3 complaint, the family was at that point looking to review the curriculum when we were in brick and mortar. So they were, they were speaking to Dr. Whitteman and to other community partners we had who are helping us in the development of the sexual education curriculum. And so that's what they're talking about, and I think Jenny can speak to that piece.
And if I may interject, the virtual scholars, with the assistance of the Principal Frazier provided to us in coordinating with the instructors for virtual scholars, we have no complaints about the availability of our, of our ability to review curriculum through the virtual scholars program.
No, that's not true this time around. And I think this is general that can go into the public record. The problem is that it was a systemic problem, again, with not being able to get simple access to look at things that are actually of medical concern to a child with an IEP with severe medical concerns that resulted in entirely inappropriate curriculum. So we are not opposed to sex ed, we never asked out of sex ed. This is not, this is not about contesting sex ed. This is about, you know, parents with children who have specific medical concerns that their care teams have specifically put into IEPs and the systemic failure of being able to review for those specific issues resulting in actual harm. And in this case, you know, that was, that was something that was coming many years down the line. And that-
I think we want to-
Principal Frazier did not have-
Yeah, we want to allow some time for the-
Because of the district.
We want to allow some time now for the Board members to ask some questions of staff and of you all. So Mary, had you asked Ms. Whitteman to respond about the curriculum there? I missed that and I missed what you were asking her to respond with there.
What I was suggesting was that the, in response to Director Bailey's question about the access to virtual scholars, that's the Step 1, that's the new complaint, and that is not going to be heard today. The curricular concerns that were raised in the initial complaint, I think can be best addressed by Dr. Whitteman, who met with the family, I think, on at least two occasions to talk curriculum.
Yeah, so we had for high school curriculum, Franklin High School was a part of the ACT grant, so Adolescents and Communities Together grant, which was to increase comprehensive sexuality education curriculum and training for high school teachers, particularly at schools that saw a higher than we would expect rate of unintended teen pregnancy and STIs. So in partnership with Multnomah County Health Department and Planned Parenthood of Columbia-Lulamette, we selected an evidence-based curriculum in accordance with federal grant requirements. So it had to be an evidence-based program, which we had two. We had reducing the risk and positive prevention plus. Both of those curricula are not, they're not textbook curricula. So the materials that we have are a teacher's guide. So that's essentially what we have. We have student workbooks. Student workbooks can go home. Teacher's guide are copyrighted materials that we're not allowed to give. But they can be accessed online if you wanted to purchase your own copy of those curriculum. Those curriculum are always available to view from the teacher or from the office, it should have been available through the office and/or through the teacher. But we can't, we can't give those materials. One thing I would note about the materials, these materials also went through an extensive adaptation process in accordance with the grant to ensure that they were medically accurate, LGBTQ-inclusive, culturally responsive, trauma-informed. So that was a number of community partners from Multnomah County, Latino Network, Native American Youth Services, SEI, and another number of other community-based organizations that provided adaptations. To the point that if the family were to purchase the curriculum, let's say from the vendor, they would not have the exact same curriculum as what's delivered because there were adaptations made in accordance with the grant. So that is why we encourage families to preview materials and we provided a copy. The time we met with Mr. Frazier at Franklin, there was a copy in the office, which we said they could look through.
Ms. Whitteman.
And this highlights the absurd hurdles that families are required to undergo to address this curriculum.
Can you, we're-
Yes, ma'am.
We're in a portion right now where the Board is asking some questions. So we'll, we'll have another chance to speak when we get into our executive session, but we'd like some time now for us to be able to ask some questions. So I had a question from Ms. Whitteman, which is, in that-
Do we, do we need to absent ourselves from this portion of the proceeding?
No, you're welcome to. You're welcome to.
If I'm going to interject at this point, I'm going to interject at this point-
There's inaccuracies.
When inaccuracies are presented, I am going to interject and interject strongly. And if you are uncomfortable with that, then maybe we should be excused from this portion of the proceeding.
So what I'm-
It's really hard for us to sit here and listen to-
I am not going to listen to lies at this point. I'm not going to-
Parents are not allowed, parents are-
And I have, I've had enough.
Parents are not able to purchase to it, as Ms. Whitteman said. It's been altered. It took us two years. And by the time we saw it, we were told we were the only people who had seen it. We, our child actually is having problems in her last term of school because it took so long for you to show that medically necessary curriculum to us. And when we did see it, we saw that it contained subterfuge. It was attempts to hide curriculum from parents, erase it from the boards, interrogate children about their private sexual and political affiliations and in direct-
And their private sexual feelings.
Their private sexual feelings. And, you know, and all of that stuff is in direct violation of 20 UFC 1232, which is that parents have a right to see curriculum regardless of the amount of content. So we just, you know, we can't stay silent about this. The public needs to understand. What, this is not, this is not us objecting to sex ed. This is, this is sex ed being hidden. Why are you hiding it?
So our, our process here is to give you that time at the beginning to speak and then for us to ask questions?
Yes, your process. This is, this is it. We're done with the process. We are done with the process. The process is an utter failure.
We are asking you to be done so that we can go to ODE.
Okay. Well, let us then move into our executive session and so we can deal with that part. And then we will take a vote in executive session on the issues related to those. And then we will move back into public meeting to take a vote on those issues. All right, the Board of Education of Portland Public Schools will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6604 to discuss complaints relating to confidential records. The Board will now bring forward Mr. Johnson and Ms. Kirkpatrick's Step 3 appeal to complaint number 2020-04, specifically whether to uphold or overturn in whole or in part the superintendent's decision. Because of the nature of the complaint, there will be two votes before the Board. We've already had the first one. The vote made during this, okay, the vote made during this session now will be made public. However, the vote that we just made during the executive session will remain confidential, but for the participants of the executive session. All right, do I have a motion on this part of the complaint?
I'll make the motion to get us going.
So what are you moving?
Regardless of how I vote, I will move to uphold the superintendent.
Resolution. All right, thank you, Director Bailey. Do I have a second for this motion?
Second.
All right, Director Bailey moves and Director Scott seconds the motion, which we will number Resolution 6034. What further Board discussion is there on this matter? I would begin by just saying Superintendent and Chief Quayar, Craig, is that your correct title? Deputy Superintendent Quayar? I just, I'm sorry, I need to have a better sense of all of your titles. I feel like you've heard us on this desire that some of the Board members have expressed about considering parental access to curriculum and would ask that we maybe think about how to do that in light of some of the copyright issues. Superintendent, do you have any, I saw you unmuted. Did you have a response?
Yeah, I would, and I would echo that same desire that I think Directors share. I think, you know, it's no stretch for me to say our pledge is to make curriculum accessible to parents to the maximum extent possible. I think we can be creative about eliminating any barriers. I don't think you should have to go to the office, but sometimes it's a unique curriculum or maybe it's a material that we don't have duplicates of. I just have a hard time believing that with the sex ed curriculum that this isn't a question that hasn't come up for, you know, in other districts. So, you know, I look forward to seeing how we can work with that publisher to see how we can create another avenue for making those materials accessible so that, so that parents have that opportunity. But it's no mystery here that we're trying to keep from families around materials that we use, instructional materials in schools. So I'm making a big note of it. I'm sure our Deputy Superintendent is. We want, we encourage families to review the instructional resources that we use in our classrooms for learning.
Thank you, Superintendent.
I thank you, Superintendent. I also wanted to weigh in and just remind everyone here to be mindful of fact that it is difficult for some parents to make it in. Not everybody's able-bodied, speaks English, has the access. As a single working parent, it would have taken me some days to figure out how to make it in on a weekly basis to read through the curriculum. So it's just, I just want to weigh in on the fact that I support what's been said here today and that it's important to be mindful of being open and providing access for all, not just people that have the leisure to come in to an office to, you know, to review curriculum. So if we can make it as open and as accessible to as many people as possible, including language translation, I think that would be wonderful.
I think we can be creative about it. I don't want to speak for our Health Services Department, but in any content area, you know, we lend out library books to students all the time if we need to lend out or buy a set of materials that could be, you know, lent for a period of time to families. Maybe that's a solution. So, and where possible, and we can get permission from publishers, you know, a digital version, which nowadays I think most people want to see anyways when we purchase content. It does make me think about curricular adoptions that we have coming up. That might be an important feature that we negotiate that as we purchase material, that we have digital access to it as well and maybe a general password for families who want to review those.
That's terrific thinking. And I wanted to add to that, that I attended a workshop last year about accessibility in terms of putting materials into Braille and making accessible, like digital versions of things, like font size and font colors and certain fonts that are more accessible than others. There's a whole body of literature out there right now. And I would encourage anybody that we contract with to, you know, we want our vendors to be able to comply with these methods that help get access for people that are able-bodied.
So again, to the maximum extent possible, I can't speak to this specific and unique curriculum. Jenny's here. I'm sure she's had this conversation probably with them. And maybe we get a special permission to duplicate the whole thing, but I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Ms. Whitteman?
Yeah, so to speak more in general, the two curriculum that we had that are copyright-protected were purchased as part of the grant. So those ones have been a little bit more complex to work with and navigate. But we have more recently moved to an entire K-12 materials for comprehensive sexuality education. It's all open source materials, so that is now available both online. And we have both English and Spanish versions in all of our offices in grades K through 12. We also link to it in all of our communication, our notification letters, which are translated into all of our languages. And, but you raise a good point about if it's in the office in print form and if it's in, if it's accessible digitally, that there, that doesn't mean that it's, that doesn't mean there aren't continued to be barriers to accessing it. So I think this is a really, it's a really important point for us to consider what other ways we can make it more accessible. And I appreciate the conversation around copyright materials. And that's an area I'd like to learn more about how we can do that when traditionally we might have a textbook we could send home versus a teacher's guide and what rules and regulations are around that.
All right, are there any other comments before we go ahead and vote on this matter?
So just, I want to say in public session that I agree with all the comments that have been made by fellow Board members about access to curriculum. Just as a parent, I think not everybody's always going to agree with the curriculum, but we should, people should have access to it. And I think there's been several different avenues discussed tonight. And also, given the passage of the bond and our investment in curriculum, I think there are many of the things that Director DePass mentioned that we can explore to make our curriculum more accessible to parents in the broader community.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and ask us to vote now. Sorry, Director Bailey, did you have another comment?
What I'm hearing is that there's a fair amount of agreement with the complainants on this issue. So I would at least like to have that formally observed as a, I don't know if that's an amendment.
You'd like to amend your own motion?
I would like to amend the motion by saying that, and help me out, Mary.
I would say, I would say that to amend the motion to read, uphold the superintendent's response and ask- response and ask for increased opportunity for parents to access curriculum with a follow-up on progress towards that in six months.
No, I think it's specifically important to say this part of the complaint we agree with.
They were not provided access?
So I think we have to be careful with that because I don't know what we're, I don't know what we're agreeing with. I think we agree that parents should have access and it should be, so that's different than agreeing with all the facts.
I agree that parents should have access. I do believe that the parents in this case were given access. I do think we can do a better job of lowering the barriers to that access.
Well, I think-
Sorry, Craig.
No, I agree. I think we can, we can, we can make a statement in there or we can amend it just slightly by making the statement that, you know, the district is pledging to make curriculum accessible to parents to the maximum extent possible. I think the superintendent said it best, said it well, and that's going to be our pledging commitment. And so I think that we can absolutely, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we can, we can add that to, we can add that statement to the resolution, I believe. Yeah.
Okay. Hang on one second, so many people are talking. So let's go with Mary first and hear her verdict on that, and then check back with Director Bailey to see if that satisfies what he was thinking. Mary?
Well, I think you need a motion to see if the amendment, if you can bring the amendment, and then vote on the amendment, and then vote on the entire resolution.
So the statement that we're still discussing the amendment, we haven't actually come up with one yet. So Director Bailey, would you like to take a spin on what you'd like the amendment to be?
Well, I'm kind of hearing informally that there's agreement for a general, we need to do this as a district. And if you all want to go ahead and do that, that's fine, and while I do support that, I will still vote no.
Okay.
And if that's the sense of the body, so be it, but there we go.
All right, so do we have someone that is willing to make that amendment then to the motion? All right, doesn't sound like we have an amendment to the motion before us.
I'm sorry, you're looking for an amendment that-
Of course not, but why would you?
This is the story of our lives.
So the question-
Graduating from school at 12 years.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to remove myself from this meeting at this point. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
Okay, so board member, the question before us is, do we want to amend the motion we have before us, uphold the superintendent's resolution? Do we want to amend that to include a provision asking for sort of codifying what we've discussed around parent accessibility to curriculum? And so if we want to amend that, now is the time to do that. If we don't, then we need to move forward.
I will just say from my perspective, I don't see anything in the record that says we didn't provide curriculum to the maximum extent possible. I hear from board members, and I don't disagree that if there are ways we can do more, we should do more, but I don't see anything in the record given that we didn't try and do that in this case, which is why I won't support that amendment, if anyone were to actually make it.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary because this is a public part of the meeting, and I think we have fully, there's been an expression by majority of the board, and I think a positive response by the superintendent, a path forward, and that should be complimentary to the vote or could be without amending the resolution.
I, I think staff did what they thought was possible, and, you know, I acknowledge the meetings happen and the sharing. I'm just saying that wasn't enough. I acknowledge that staff may not have seen a way to do better. So I'm not pointing a finger at anybody in particular, you know, Dr. Whitteman or anybody, except to say that it wasn't enough.
All right. Do we have a vote on the motion as it is before us?
Can I offer an amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I think the current motion reads something like, the board upholds the superintendent's Step Three decision. I would suggest adding a clause, comma, with the understanding that the district will work to facilitate opportunities for parents to review curricular materials.
Okay, do I have a second on that amendment? Can you reread that, Director Moore?
With the understanding that the district will work to facilitate opportunities for parents to review curricular materials.
I'll second that amendment. I would say it doesn't go far enough because I think we need to, if we can't make a curriculum broadly available to parents, then we shouldn't adopt it.
All right.
I'll still go ahead and second, and I'll vote yes on the amendment and then no on the-
So we need, okay.
So just as Director Lowry, Chair Lowry, since we're, I just, we're still discussing, I actually just want to respond to that because I think it's important to say on the record. I am concerned that if we set that high bar, we might forego really good curriculum that our students would benefit from. And I think what's been, what I'm sort of formulating in my mind is we're going through this and listening to the appeal, listening to the family. I don't disagree at all that we need to make curriculum as widely accessible as possible. I don't disagree at all that that should be, you know, one of the values that the district uses when looking at curriculum. I do disagree that we should set that as a bar, that if we can't share it and, you know, for everybody gets a copy of it every week that they want it, that we never adopt it. Because I think what we're doing is letting a very small number of families in the district dictate what the majority of the district can learn and benefit from, and I think that is beginning to set a dangerous precedent. There is in fact a responsibility as a family, if you have particular needs or concerns, as a district, we owe it to you to give you that opportunity and to opt your child out and to make changes to it. We also owe it to all of our students not to make changes to the overall curriculum or process based on a very small number of people who might have concerns. And so finding that balance is challenging and tricky, but I worry very much we're going towards this side of everything has to be available for everybody all the time, which might actually limit some of the things that our students would benefit from.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this motion? I'm going to, Ms. Whitteman, your hand up, but I'm going to have us just have a board discussion right here. Director Moore?
Yeah, I agree with Director Scott, and if he thinks this clause as currently written sets the bar too high, can you, can you offer some, an amendment to the amendment?
Yeah, I don't think we need it part of this. I think this is an appeal process on a very specific case. My view is we should uphold the appeal. I think we've made it clear, and I think the superintendent shares the values of making curriculum as widely accessible, so I don't think, I don't think any amendments needed.
I concur with Director Scott. I do not support the amendment. All right, any further discussion before we vote on the amendment?
Chair Lowry, I would only say when we say curriculum, that's a broad term. We have district-approved curricular adoptions, but instructional materials also include those decisions that individual teachers make in every classroom. And so my hope would be that if teachers have questions about the materials that a particular teacher is using for a unique course, you know, that they can request that. And all I'm saying is that whether it's a teacher academic freedom choice or the district-approved curriculum, that we would do our best to make sure that those materials are accessible and that we pay particular attention to eliminating barriers. But a statement that reads that we'll make curriculum available kind of presumes that we don't ever at all. So I just want to be careful, and I know that's not the intent, but it can have that connotation.
Ms. Whitteman, did you want to add something here, or did we cover the matter that you were interested in expressing?
Superintendent Guerrero spoke to it. I think part of the struggle is the academic freedom piece is that while teachers may use materials that we recommend as a district, they also supplement because they know their students best and they know what their needs are, and all those supplements are not always made, you know, the entire semester in advance. And so, yeah, he spoke exactly to what I wanted to say.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? All right, we have the Moore amendment before us. All those in favor to amend the motion? Rita, do you want to read it one more time?
The board upholds the superintendent's Step Three decision with the understanding that the district will work to facilitate opportunities for parents to review curricular materials.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All right. All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. No?
No.
Any abstentions? Director Moore, how did you vote?
She voted no, but I'm just curious about that. Like, why don't we just withdraw the amendment then?
Well, we voted now, so we can, the amendment does not pass. It was two yes and four no. We move now to the main motion. Are we ready to vote on the main motion before us? All right. All those in favor of the motion to uphold the superintendent's resolution, please indicate now by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Did you say no, Director Bailey? Okay, I couldn't hear you, you cut out again. Director Brim, did you vote? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes five to one. The board has voted to uphold the superintendent's decision of the Step Three complaint. And Complaint 2020-04 is approved by a vote of five to one. Was there anything further? All right, I know that folks are excited to go over to the Southeast Guiding Coalition Open House. So thank you all for your time tonight. This meeting is adjourned.